We will hold the meeting to order. Mrs. Bohan, here.
Here.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Here.
Mrs. Steiner?
Here.
Dr. Schuman?
Here.
Ms. Yekitis?
Here.
We will start with the pledge of allegiance and Mike Nixick, would you lead us in the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every day and justice.
Thank you. We will start with the consent agenda and because of the different dates and the fact that some people were here for some of those and not for others, we'll take them individually. So the first one is approval for minutes from the public hearing held on September 25th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Second by Sam. And we'll go ahead and take the ball. Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Abstain.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Abstain.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Okay, then the next item is approval for minutes from the regular meeting held on October 9th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
Same.
And a second? Second, Sam. We'll go ahead and take the ball. Dr. Sitwalla?
Abstain.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
And then the approval for minutes from the certification of levies held on October 23rd, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
I will.
Thank you. Second by Sam. And we'll go ahead and take the ball. Dr. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Abstain.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Then approval of accounts from the month of October. Do I have a motion to approve?
Same.
Thank you. And a second? Second. Thank you. Dr. Sitwalla? And we'll go ahead and take the ball. Dr. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any communications from the public?
Let me just real quick comment, this is not an agenda item, just for the general public, those on cable TV and so on, when you hear various board members abstaining, that just simply means that our calendars didn't fit and we were not present. It's not any kind of a objection or a negative item, it just usually has to do with availability and attendance. Thank you.
And any correspondence? Does this have surround? No. Okay, is that all? Then we'll move on to announcements.
Yeah, I do have a few that I'd like to share and I, to begin, before I forget this, I do want to note that next week, November 18th to the 22nd, is American Education Week. Each year, the week immediately prior to Thanksgiving is designated as American Education Week to show support and appreciation for public education and to honor the individuals who make a difference to ensure that every child receives a quality education. So it's nice to make that announcement and also extend a big congratulations and a thank you to all of our staff that contribute to our children's education. We received some good news from the college board in last month, that a few of our students received some special recognition, so we wanted to be sure to make some announcements regarding that. To begin with, the 2019 State AP Scholars were announced and two of our former students from the 2019 Marshfield High School graduate class were recently recognized as the Wisconsin 2019 State AP Scholars. We would like to congratulate Suhas Bhatt and Nikita Gunakuta for being recognized as the 2019 State Scholars for Wisconsin. The college board grants the AP Scholar Award annually to the top male and the top female students in each of the 50 states and the District of Columbia for their performance on the AP exams. What this involves is students are chosen for the award by earning scores of three or higher on the greatest number of AP exams and the highest average scores on those AP exams that they've taken. So as recent NHS graduates, Suhas now attends Harvard University and Nikita is attending University of Wisconsin-Madison. This is a tremendous recognition. It's very unusual to have one, let alone both, you know, the two at one high school. From our records, I believe this is the first time in 10 years that we've had both the male and female AP State Scholars, so that's a tremendous honor. In addition, we also received recognition that Selena Rocha was selected as a 2019-2020 National Hispanic Scholar. The college board's National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies Hispanic and Latino and Latino students in their junior year of high school based upon their achievement scores on the PSAT exam as well as an outstanding academic record for their accomplishments within their local high schools. So we'd like to extend a big congratulations to Selena on this national special recognition as well. And then finally, it's hard to believe we're coming around on the calendar to start talking about school board elections for 2020, but it is that time that we'd like to make some announcements to the public regarding those elections that are coming up in April. So the last day for incumbent office holders not intending to seek reelection, they need to file that notification of non-candidacy by December 27th of 2019. The deadline for declaring candidacy to run again, that is January 7th of 2020. 5:00 PM is the cutoff time on that particular day. The spring primary, if that ends up being required or is necessary, would be held on February 18th of 2020. And then finally, the spring election this year will be held on April 7th of 2020. The appropriate forms can be obtained from the websites of Wisconsin Elections Commission and the Wisconsin Ethics Commission, or we have those available here at the Board of Education Office as well. Thank you.
Quick addendum, again, I want to speak up and interrupt. Although we haven't had both state scholars for 10 years, we are frequently, more often than not, in fact, at least home to at least one of the state scholars here in Marshfield who speaks very well at the AP program.
We have our details with the National Education Week and probably taking our staff and all that they do for our kids and making those opportunities available. So thank you to our staff.
Yeah, and I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves because we do have advanced placement as part of the CNI report that's coming up, but along those lines, from the records that were reported out to us at that committee meeting, Marshfield High School has the most total number of AP scholars since they've been keeping the records. So yes, we certainly are accustomed to having a number of them. Thanks, Del.
I'm just going to piggyback off that again. And, you know, we've got great AP, but we have a lot of students that aren't AP and we've got teachers that are giving amazing educations to all of our kids. And I just want to say, I spent Monday and Tuesday night, both middle school and the high school, doing parent-teacher, and I was walking through the parking lot in the high school yesterday, I thought, I could come here and visit the teachers every night. And what I love is you guys must be exhausted because you were so into me and my kid and then 15 minutes later, you were equally as into the next mom or dad and their kid. And so I just want to say thank you because I felt like I was your entire world for 15 minutes and then you did the same things for the next parent and the next parent and the next parent. And in elementary, Jeff, I always know that happens because I dropped my kid off every day, right? But in middle school and high school, we're not allowed to walk in with our kids anymore. It's so cool to be able to have that interaction with the teachers. So I just wanted to say, AP or not, you guys are doing amazing work. It was awesome.
And I think that everyone who has spoken has spoken from all of us. Okay, we will move on to district recognitions and district staff reports, superintendent's report.
Yeah, I do have a few items, may feel like an extension of the announcements that we just had, but as a matter of fact, this next item relates, is very new. In fact, just yesterday, the State of Wisconsin released Accountability Report Cards. So we did want to note that each fall, our Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, or as we commonly say, the DPI, issues these Accountability Report Cards for schools and districts throughout Wisconsin. The report cards present key information related to outcomes for students as measured by the statewide assessments, attendance, staying in school and high school completion, just to mention a few of the variables that go into the report cards. The report cards are designed to help parents and educators understand how their schools are doing as well as where it can improve upon to help all of our children learn, advance it in the next grade level, and graduate ready for college and career. The school district of Marshfield received an overall score of 74.3, which is in the category of exceeds expectations for the 1819 school year. You can access those scores on our district website and the individual school results for all of our schools in the Marshfield School District are also available for download. If you go to our district website, right on the homepage, you'll see, it's one of the first things that shows if you hit the public would like to click on and review those score reports. And then finally, I just did want to note that coming up this weekend, we have our Fall Play. Performances of the Fall Play radium drills are quickly, it's quickly approaching, it's this Friday and Saturday, held at the high school. Tickets are available in the main office of the high school. You can also get those online at showtickets4u.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda are the gifts or donations, and we have a number of them. The board is asked to accept the following. For Grant School, school supplies valued at $395.14 from Pick and Save and school supplies valued at $150 from Reese Marshall Arts. And then at Madison, tiles for classroom crafts valued at $75 from Brian Asher and school supplies valued at $150 from Reese Marshall Arts. $1,000 from Sue Osborne to purchase book for every student, $200 from Carolyn Bayham. And at Washington, erasers valued at $10 for the PDIS store. At Lincoln, $100 for school lunch accounts. And then in general, $100 donated to the Marshfield High School cheer team. And then for the school forest lodge project, $1,000 from Erin Staub, $100 from Curtin and Boson, $2,845 in in-kind donation from Nicolai Construction, and $2,000 in-kind donation from Tubble Electric. What is the board's pleasure regarding these gifts?
To accept those great things.
Thank you, Martin. Is there a second? Sam, thank you. Next, we're going to go to finance committee, and we have Mr. Carnardi to take this.
All right, tonight we did meet, and thanks, Dan, for the early report, helps. We reviewed the monthly bills, $5,281,000. Everything looked good there. Then we move down to the presentation of the fiscal year 2018-2019 financial audit. Kevin Bennett Bandke was the auditor. He joined us via teleconference, and we went through everything in the book that we have here. One of the highlights is property taxes from the year before are down 4%. So that's pretty big to the whole community and with what the state has done and everything as far as finance to the school. We went a little bit further and I was pleased to see that we had about $13 million left on the loan from what we did to Washington School, Madison School left to pay. That's really awesome in the amount of time. So we're looking real good there. The auditors praised the district for excellence in financial management. So congratulations to our financial team, they've done an excellent job. Then we discuss the financial calendar. I believe that is in the board docs, if you want to take a look at it, but that was what they project will be coming to us throughout the next year. So the five-year enrollment projections, historic trends were reviewed and discussed. Enrollment has been studied since 2005 and stable enrollment is predicted for the future. So if you take a look at that, we went all the way back, I believe Pat took us back to 98 to show us the roller coasters, and now we're starting to stabilize out. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it's about 3,800 is where we're at.
Yep.
So that looked good. Capital finance considerations for Marshfield is the Applied Personal Learning Experience and Maple Program. This was discussed in the past. Looking like we'll be able to bring that alive in 2021 is where we had kind of set. So right now, they're looking at areas where they can put this in middle school. One of the spots is in the lecture hall right now, and they're going to be bringing more to us as we go in the next few months. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to curriculum instructions. I'll pass some capital to Mr. Cavies. CNI did meet on October 23rd, and we looked at the Marshfield Middle School Personalized Pathways Program and looked at an overview of the first year of the program, and it went well for staff and students. It provides students a structured educational setting with individualized learning to help them become successful academically and promotes responsible student behavior in the school and in the community. Just to elaborate a little, that's part of the MTSS, Multi-Tierred System of Schools. And so in the past, each of the schools has moved, in the case that fit that school, through tiers one and two, and so now they're looking at three here and how to implement that. So the report that we received also talked about how students are referred, what types of criteria they look at, how individual the pathways can be because there are so many different variables for any given student and their needs, and that it's a continuous improvement cycle. So you're always trying to help that student get back in at, you know, a lower tier level if you can. So did I describe that okay? Okay. So that just gives you an update on that. Then we looked at the Advanced Placement Annual Update, and Dan Jargenio presented the results for 2018 and 19 and recap of the progress the program has made. We had just a slight decline a couple of years ago. Strengths and weaknesses we looked at in the plan for the future, but the overall picture is exactly what Dr. Christensen described as far as how we compare with the rest of the state and other schools that, you know, do well with AP classes. So again, it's a real testament to the efforts of our staff in offering a variety of classes. It's a testament to the culture at the high school to encourage all kids to take advantage of this and to get their feet wet by challenging themselves with an AP class. And at our next meeting, we'll be looking at the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data from 2019, and we'll be looking at the Community Learning Centers update. So that's it for CNI.
Questions from the board?
Thank you. Then the next item is facilities, safety, and transportation.
There's none.
Okay, then we go on to policy.
Okay. We met at 3 o'clock this afternoon, so thank you, Jenny, for getting the minutes typed and already in. Amazing. And we have one action item, and I'll save that for the end. We had a really, we had a robust meeting today, and we had an update on the student cellphone use policy at the high school. If you remember, we spent a little bit of time talking about it last year, and the cellphone policy was adjusted and adapted based on feedback from students and the staff last year. And so at the end of the year last year, there were, there was correspondence that went home to the families, talking about the fact that cellphone policy is going to change, and so the use is going to change. And so we had asked Jackson, who's really leading the effort, thank you, Jackson, for all the hard work that you're doing, to give us an update. And so we had a really deep dive into the implications of the cellphone policy. And Jackson, could I ask that you would share that PowerPoint so you could, we could upload it into board docs for the whole board to look at? Because there was some really good data. So the questions were pretty much the same as the questions that were asked in the spring of last year and again this fall. And just, I don't have the slides in front of me, but obviously, we're seeing basically, bottom line, we're seeing that teachers are reporting significantly fewer distractions. Teachers are also reporting, I think that there's better compliance with not using cellphones. I mean, really, bottom line is it's working really well. There were sort of even better if, there was a couple of slides that stood out to me, that there was still sort of work to be done on students understanding why we changed the policy, because that didn't, that seemed to be, 45% of students weren't completely bought in, I'm looking at you, Jackson, but there was still, we were at like 85% that's going, yeah, I love this new policy.
I think the majority knew what it's about.
Or whether, whether they liked it or not.
Well, we didn't really ask.
It was, we're never going to get to like no cellphone use. And then, of course, we started talking about, well, now there's, you know, Apple Watches and they can text on that. So we're never, ever going to, you know, get rid of this dragon. But it really is impressive what the high school has done. And Mike, I was thinking about you, because last year when we talked with this, Mike Nixick said, there's really no problem at the middle school. And at that time, he was the principal of the middle school, and now he moved over to the high school. So you inherited a whole new cellphone issue, but it gets under control now. It was really interesting to see also that the citations, do you refer to them as citations in Skyward for cellphones, are significantly higher this year. And that's really good, actually, because that means the policy is being enforced. And I bet you at the end of the year, we're going to start to see those citations go back down, right? So we're starting to see that kids are actually, you know, there's a consequence to not being compliant with the cellphone policy now. But it's interesting because other discipline was down. So, you know, less profanity, Jackson, I'm looking at you. What else was down? We had higher, we had higher citations for cellphone, we were anticipating that, less profanity.
Less classroom disruption.
Less disruption.
Tardiness was down.
Tardiness was down.
Yeah.
And there was one that was really interesting, and I asked you if we could make a correlation, which we'll just, we'll make an assumption, that there was less missing assignments that you said. So, you know, it's brand new, but I think this is a really good move. And again, thank you, Jackson, because you did a lot of research to see what other schools were doing, really has overseen and developed the data collection analysis. And so it's exciting. We'll, again, we'll ask for more updates because it's timely. We also sort of talked about, too, parents and how they can be engaged in cellphones because one of the things that you asked about, Sam, is I wonder if kids are now using their cellphones more after school and in the evening.
I thought we were going to be having like silent lunch because the cellphone can be too stern. But that's true. And I had just heard anecdotally, a student, a parent said to me, well, yeah, now, he's on the phone for two hours when he gets home from school. But, you know, so we may add some questions in the next iteration of data collection. I wanted to add a couple of other positives that since the staff had reported, 72% of the staff reported more classroom engagement, which is exactly what we're hoping to see, that more classroom engagement. And then also, and I thought this was interesting, more opportunities for positive relationship building, since we had more time with this down and meeting. So it was exciting, yeah.
So ongoing discussions are, and this was also interesting, is some of the feedback from students has been that they would love to have, they really miss having music. They like to listen to music as they're doing study hall or whatever. So one of the things that's being looked at is can some sort of music act be added to the iPads so that they still have that music element? And then there are also questions or concerns about, you know, if school gets out early because of a snow day and I can't use my cellphone, how do I get? So we're working through those pieces, but overall, the policy is really working and that was really exciting. And again, thank you to the high school staff and administrators for implementing a new policy so diligently. It's great. We have a whole lot of policies for first reading. I'm not going to go through the policies, I'll just name quickly what they are if anybody is interested. It's just a first reading, so you can go into board docs and look at them, or if the board has any questions, you can contact Sam, Karen, or I. What we have forward for the first reading is a policy related to oath, taking the oath, notice of regular meetings, discrimination based on disability policy, English language proficiency policy, school counseling and academic career planning, two policies in two different sections about creating a position, two policies in two different sections around vacancies, a policy around student accidents and concussions specifically, a policy around student fundraising that we had lots of questions about, payment of invoices, payroll authorization is listed there, but we've actually taken that off for the first reading because we needed some more information. So that 6510 is not forward tonight for a first reading. That's the right one, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. We also have a policy for around auditing, disposition of real property, disposition of personal property, accounting system for fixed assets, the technology, privacy policy, student records, and then transportation by a private vehicle. And about four or five of those policies have minor edits, but nothing that changes the meaning of the policy. So they're all being presented tonight for a first reading. Any questions, please contact one of us, and we will try to answer your questions or refer you to Ryan. And then that leads us to the one action item that we have tonight, and that's Policy 8410, which is crisis intervention. And if you remember at the last meeting, we had this policy forward, and Dr. Schuman read the policy when we looked at it, and the policy referred to, it was kind of a circular reference, it referred to a policy, another policy, 5113.02, which we didn't actually have. So we didn't, we were referring to a policy that we don't have. So we tabled it, and that policy, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, that policy by Neola is referenced to federal law with respect to school safety and transfers. Is that correct?
School transfers as a result of violent crime circumstances.
Got it, thank you. So instead of putting in 51, that policy, we just put a reference to the DPI administrative rule, so we didn't need to have that policy in there. So is that clear to everyone? So we just referenced what the federal rule is, or the DPI, excuse me, rule is. So in light of that, we are now moving it forward for approval tonight if there's any questions. And this will come forward on behalf of the committee because we approved it today. Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the ball. Okay, Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Carnardi?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwalla?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Chaney?
Yes.
Last thing, in terms of future agenda items, we talked about the fact that there's yet another policy update coming, so there'll be another wave of policies. And we also requested that we would look at the dress code policy as well. So that's it for future agenda items, and that's it for the policy committee.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll move on to employee relations. Ms. Yekitis?
Okay. Since he is a district employee, I want to say that Jackson is Jackson Hein, one of our superstar assistant principals that we have in the district sitting back there in the back room. I am as guilty as anybody, just calling people by their first name. We'd like the public to know who these people are. Okay, now to my thing here. We have a couple of action items that I'm going to go to, if you don't mind. We had an update on staffing for the Personalized Learning Initiative at Marshfield Middle School. Applications have been received, and there will be another update on who some of those applicants, what the pool might be, and maybe who some of those choices might be as we move forward into further executive sessions. I would just say that this is a very unique program that will allow, starting at the middle school, allow some of our school, allow some of our teachers to, I don't know how to guess how to kind of pool, almost like a super team teaching type program that would involve some of our, our teachers to work with a set group of students to basically just help them through their day and help them through their academic adventures, I guess, at Marshfield Middle School. Kim, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I'm never going to.
Not at this point? Okay. So we have some discussion on that. Let's get to the action items. If I can get back to my agenda. Okay. We have, first of all, an action item on behalf of the Employee Relations Committee, which is asking to approve an accounting department assistant position. That's at .5 at D P, in other words halftime. That accounting department is just getting overwhelmed with, I don't want to call it paperwork anymore, because now it's mostly digital work, but there's also transformation from paperwork to digital work. And it will free the accounting executive to, to spend more time on other issues. And some of the, I don't want to call it minutia, but some of the detail type works, I bills and forms and stuff, can be handled by an assistant to kind of take up some of the slack. So, on behalf of Employee Relations, I am asking for approval of the halftime accounting assistant in the accounting department.
Any questions or comments?
I have only one comment. And that is that Nicole Lopper, our HR person, did an extensive audit of, you know, with Pat Sauserman and the rest of his department cooperating and working with her, an extensive audit of what tasks everybody in that department does and what some of the gaps were and what. So it's, it was, this was very well thought out. I mean, there was quite the flow chart on what this person here would be doing.
It was very clear that this is.
Very clear, very specific tasks.
And that this had been sort of a position that ended up getting taken up. The slack was getting taken up in the summer with an intern that had to be retrained every summer, a different person every summer. So this is going to offer a lot of continuity and opportunities to build and add services and programs that needed to be there.
Right. And as Sam pointed out, the fact that we didn't have a specific staff person doing it, that we were filling in with summer help, et cetera, that we're changing every year, really showed home the need for this.
All questions?
And we'll go ahead and take the floor.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cimari?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes. Next, we have an action item, approval of a health assistant position. It's a full-time position. And that is on behalf of the Employee Relations Committee.
Any questions or comments? And that's it. Madison.
Primarily at Madison. Could be used at other places eventually as well.
And again, just the medical needs that were presented, you know, are very, there are things that need a lot of training. So typically, our nurses have to train staff to take care of all these medical needs. And the list is fairly long of what those needs are right now. So hopefully, we're going to be able to hire someone with some medical background that can help fill that position.
And we seem to be getting more and more students that are in need of those types of programs or that type of help. And so that's why we come forward with that item, the approval of a health assistant position.
Go ahead and take the floor.
Mr. Cimari?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Take a second.
And we'll move on to new business, approval of retirements.
This is not on behalf of personnel. Each month, before we come in, we have an executive session. All board members meet with district, central office administrators, and others. And we receive the monthly personnel report. So I'm going to need a second for each of these, please. I make a motion that we approve the retirements of Lisa Carroll at Grant School and of Ellen Ladwick, a maintenance assistant who works district-wide in the district. So I'm making that motion on behalf of myself as an individual board member. Do we need a second?
Do we have a second?
Sam.
Any questions? And we'll go ahead and take the floor.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cimari?
Yes.
Second, as an individual board member, again, I make the recommendation for the approval of resignations for the following. Karen Johnson, a teacher of special education at the high school. And Jen Martin, a custodian, second shift at the high school. So my motion is to approve those two resignations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, doctors. Any questions? And we'll go ahead and take the floor.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cimari?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
And we have some new hires. Some of these have actually assumed positions already because of need, but because they were hired primarily after the last board meeting. This is the formal approval comes forward tonight. Sarah Cressel, a teacher assistant, special education at the high school, replacing Sandy Zeiger. Approval of Lauren Lang, a teacher of music, K8 Middle School, Madison, second semester this year, replacing Amber Teis, Vice. Donna Leeters, Lighters, teacher assistant, special education at Nasonville, replacing Peggy Stillman. Here we go. Zoe Van Odenhoven, Odenhoven? Odenhoven, okay. Health assistant, teacher assistant, regular education at Lincoln School, replacing Angela Hardisty. And finally, Natasha Rotar, Community Learning Center Coordinator at Madison School, replacing Merrick Peterson. So I make that, ask for those approvals as an individual board member. The motion.
Second. Thank you. Any questions?
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cimari?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
And we'll move on to appointment of delegate and alternate delegate to the annual WASD convention in January. So first of all, we have board members that know they'll be going to the convention in January.
Sam?
Not sure.
I think I know. When is it?
It's 27, 20, 24. So we have Sam and Dorothy.
I'm not sure.
Okay. And I'll be going. Would anyone like to express some interest before we defer motion to appoint a delegate?
Sam, are you ready?
Will we learn to nod? I want to go nodding, Sam.
You should make mistakes. I learn a lot, but if you're willing.
I know that Francis, you have done it in the past. You do such a fine job.
Are you going for sure?
I am, but as I said, it's a good experience to share with others.
I suggest the appointment of Francis as a delegate to the WASB convention. And this is moving down the track. So all in favor?
Who's the alternate?
We just did it.
Who's the alternate?
Sam?
Thank you, Sam.
I am driving.
All in favor? Did it twice, here we go.
Okay, there we go. And then we have one more item over our, under our overnight extended trips. And that is approval for an international travel to China for Marshfield High School students and district staff as part of our MISA exchange program. And that would be in March of 2020. So I hope you had a chance to look at the information that was included in board docs. But this would be open to students and staff that would like to reciprocate with our sister schools over there. And they wouldn't just be going to that location, they'd be going to other cities also to experience Chinese culture and et cetera. So.
My motion is to approve for an international travel to China for HHS students and district staff as part of the MISA exchange program.
Okay.
Have a motion?
Sam was first with the second.
Okay. Any questions?
I, I just have a question. I think it's fantastic. It's coming up really fast. And so one of the things we've always done is make sure that if a family can't afford, that we find, like France, for example, I've been paying for that for a year for my daughter to go, this is a $3,800 price tag. So are there going to be fundraising opportunities? And like, how are we going to make sure that there's equal access for that trip with the price tag so quickly?
In the form that was filled out, it does say there will be some fundraising. But it is, it is an expensive trip. So we may limit the ability of some students.
Because it's just, there's not going to be enough opportunity to have fun. There won't be enough.
This is a lot with other trips too. And, and we have been talking about, you know, the possibility of having for all of these trips as maybe the norm will become that we think about a, a pool of money that is available that is generated as we solicit parents' approval for paying for these. Would you, would you kick in another 200 for a child that can't go? And just to get that as part of the culture of all of the travel opportunities that we have at the school. So I think, I think there's a lot of good conversations that have happened. And hopefully, we're going to make that.
There'd be a lot of thought that would have to go into that in terms of how that person or persons could apply, what type of private conversation or application.
It would almost make more sense to me, and I don't know what committee that's been discussed at, but I think it might go to policy. It hasn't come to policy. But I'm almost thinking, Pat, I'm almost thinking, what would make, I might, I'm just brainstorming here, it might almost be better to have families make donations through the community foundation and have a system where children could file, could apply for a travel scholarship or something. That might be the cleanest way.
That's something that's come up.
But we haven't discussed that at policy. I'm just, when I look at the timeline and the price tag, that, this one is more than the rest for fundraising. And so. Right? So, so, yeah, so I have no objection to this, but I think, could we actually put something like that on a committee meeting schedule if it's, I'm happy to talk about a policy. I don't know if policy is the right, you decide, Ryan.
We'll look into that and.
I think policy would be a good place to start, maybe from there since there's dollars involved in the district.
Think of finance.
It may have to be shifted to our finance committee.
It'd be great if we could just do it through the foundation. That was my only question, comment.
A lot of the digital teachers have expressed interest in that. As I brought it up.
Because this is a political staff.
Correct.
So, any other?
This is a trip of a lifetime for a lot of people. It's one of the most beautiful places, I thought, that you could possibly see. But for parents, for the students, and everybody going over there, please remember you are going to a communist country and be on your best behavior and represent Marshfield the best you can. Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead and take the floor on approving that.
Okay. Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Cimari?
Yes.
Dr. Sitwala?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaney?
Yes.
Ms. Yekitis?
Yes.
That's the last thing on our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Any second.
Second.
All papers safe.
Bye.